All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 p.m., all members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. First, let everybody else, let everybody know in the audience, if you're here for Agenda Items E, F, G, H, or I, they're all being continued to our next meeting, so if you're here for any of those, you don't need to hang around. That's 913 East Street, 1879 Main Street, 1438 Main Street, 1600 Shawsheen Street 1, and 1600 Shawsheen Street 2. Those are all the ones being continued this evening. You don't need to hang around if you don't want to, because nothing will be done on those. So coming back to the agenda, Agenda Item A, we have no minutes this evening, so we can skip that. Agenda Item B1, committee reports, any committee reports anyone wishes to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're all set, then that brings us to Town Plans Report. Is that it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few items of note on the horizon for our November 27th meeting, we have two new hearings scheduled. One is for 50 Vale Street, and that is for a family suite special permit, and the other is for 402 Main Street for site plan review, special permit and land disturbance permit for a car wash, a proposed car wash. That project is currently under review, and we will see it at the next meeting. Next item of note, business openings, we have Trace Amigos Bar and Grill opened for business on November 7th at 1777 Main Street at the former Bobby &amp; Jack's Memphis BBQ site. They are open Sunday through Thursday, 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 4:00 to 11:00. Just like to encourage folks to pay them a visit. Number three, 17 Lee Street update, so board members and perhaps some audience members may remember, a few months back, there was an inquiry about the progress with the 17 Lee Street special permit, and I'm happy to report that this week, the town officials, including the Assistant Town Manager, Building Inspector, and Electrical Inspector, met with the owner on site and did a walkthrough to get a better idea of what needs to be completed, and they are working on a path forward to complete that project. And final note, bid self-indulgence, so forgive me here, for community events, the town's annual tree lighting will take place on Friday, December 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the town common. The town is partnering with the Tewksbury Congregational Church to bring Santa to town, and attendees will spend some time on the common singing carols, taking selfies with the Wilmington-Tewksbury Chamber of Commerce sponsored ice sculpture, and much more will be going on across the street with Santa visiting himself, and more information is on the town website for anybody who's interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Alex, if I could. So 402 Main Street is the site of the Tewksbury Greenery?
Correct.
So is that closing? Is that what I'm assuming, or?
The property has been for sale for quite some time at this point, and my understanding is that the property owners are under agreement with the proposed owners of the car wash, and I imagine that the sale is likely contingent upon them receiving permits for this project.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
So we're all set with that. Moving on to Agenda Item B2, I'm sorry, B3, 2024 Meeting Dates. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at this in their package or not, when do we have to have this by?
Ideally, I would like it approved this evening, but if it takes to the 27th, that's perfectly fine.
Anybody aware of any of these dates being an issue, like, right off the bat?
I mean, I have a Bruins game on one of them, but my wife can have the tickets. I have no real issues.
Okay. Other than that, nobody sees anything clearing right now, that, you know, you're away or anything like that?
Yeah, these were all Q.C. against any federal and Massachusetts holidays, and of note, unfortunately, the way the chips fall this year, we will only be able to accommodate one meeting in May of 2024, just based on the proximity of town meeting and Memorial Day. The board has mentioned previously that having meetings two weeks in a row doesn't give applicants enough time to update their plans or really make any meaningful contributions to the meeting, so to having that feedback before, I did not schedule consecutive meetings.
Okay. I mean, normally, we do the one meeting June, one July, one August, just flip-flopping that, nobody really has any issue?
No.
No.
All right, I don't see anything that I'm aware of that's a, that's a problem, so if we can take a motion to approve this, if we find that we have any issue, we can deal with it. So we have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item B4, this is 1625 Andover Street Special Permit Extension Request. Is this just a letter, or do we have anybody here for this?
We have someone here for it.
Are you there for 1625?
You can answer this.
Hold on, you can come up to the table. There's a wide way of going that way. Just state your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Jonathan Miller, Daily Group. We're asking for an extension of this permit. We have the property under an LOI with a potential tenant, and so we're looking to get the extension so that we can formalize a plan to submit to the town for a slight modification to the plan, but it's a more elaborate process, and so we need the time, that extra year.
Okay. Mr. Fittaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm guessing there's no restaurant going in yet, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are we looking at a cannabis place, am I under that assumption?
That's the candidate that we have, under LOI.
Okay, no problem. All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Duffy.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
No questions here, Mr. Chairman.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Chair's all set as well. What are we asking for, for an extension?
A one-year, sir.
And this was set to expire?
January 24.
Okay. All right, no issue for that, so do we have a motion to grant a one-year extension on the special permit?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Then we have 1605 Andover Street Administrative Modification Request.
Thank you. How are you?
Well, how are you?
Good to see you again.
Same here.
Just state your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Allison Kalman with the Lowell 5. I am here today to request a recommendation be removed from a special permit comment for special conditions related to 1605 Andover Street, which is space that Lowell 5 leases for to drive-up ATMs. So what I've provided is a way of, mainly as a refresher, since, just refresh everyone about the project, so the second page before you shows a depiction of the project, so Andover Street with the access road, Lowell 5 has two ATMs at the front at 1605 Andover Street, which is leased space. The access road does continue to our rear parking lot of 30 International Drive, which is our banking corporate headquarters, as well as a bank branch. I believe that the comment to allow for a stronger pedestrian connection to 30 International from 1605 Andover was put there because at the time, back in 2016, we're contemplating down at that dual ATM location, having a drive-up teller station. So I remember having conversations about, so if there's a drive-up teller, and perhaps a customer needs to get to the bank, you know, how's that happening? But since then, so that it is two drive-up ATMs, our drive-up teller kiosk is located in our parking lot, so we do not have that problem, which would eliminate the need for connectivity between the two sites for banking purposes. And where it is a drive-up ATM, the folks that visit these locations are in their automobiles anyways, so they would come and park in our lot.
Start, Mr. Duffy.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
No questions here, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozardi?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fittaya?
Okay, just one question I have, so you don't see anybody parking at the ATM and walking over to, so they're gonna drive, I'm sure?
So they're going to drive, so the ATMs, they started running in 2017, and over the course of that time, my office is actually in the back of the building, I've never seen a pedestrian walk from that location requiring assistance at the bank.
Sure, I agree, I don't see anybody parking their car and walking over, if you're gonna do anything, stay in your car and just continue to the, to the drive-up teller and so forth and so on, so I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with this.
So you, what about the reverse, though? Anybody coming from the front, coming back to do anything with the bank?
Coming from the front.
So you don't want to put the sidewalk to connect out to the front, right, for people going out that way?
Pedestrians walking from headquarters out to?
No, the other way, coming back to you guys to see the bank.
So that has not?
I mean, you got a few businesses out in front of you, and the potential for one to the side, which was, I mean, I remember when we did this, one of the reasons was, we thought the possibility of people?
For overflow parking, yes, we needed.
Right, and, you know, that may not be what's gonna go there now, but I don't know, you know, that nothing will go there ever, so if we eliminate the sidewalk, and that becomes something in the future, we're back to the same thing, so I'm just one, but I'm also wondering, it's not just a one-way thing, it's not just your folks coming out, it could not be people coming in the other way and needing or wanting to use a sidewalk rather than not using the sidewalk.
So the, so the, folks walking up the access road to the bank, I would imagine that they're just coming into the bank entrance, which on the second-to-last page, you'll see, like, kind of like the squiggly lines are where the proposed sidewalk would be, and not near the bank entrance. It is a parking lot for automobile use only. We don't see many walkers, especially on that backside.
Okay, all right, most of them. All right, so is this just a motion to?
To remove the condition and relieve the applicant of having to comply with that condition.
Okay, so do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we remove the notification on the special permit and approve the administrative modification.
All right, we have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to Agenda Item C, 935 Main Street, I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have somebody here for 935 Main Street?
Yeah.
Step up, give your name for the record, the floor is yours.
My name is Michael Secconi. We've made this application to convert the only commercial unit that was approved by special permit back to residential, and it conforms with the recent change in the zoning bylaws to allow that. And although we already had three affordable units there as part of the new zoning bylaw, this would also be affordable, so that would make four out of the 19 affordable. So I'm before the board tonight to request this modification to the special permit to eliminate the commercial unit. We've built the building, you know, we're very far along, and we've built the building exactly according to the plans that required for the commercial, we haven't made any modifications, but at this point, we'd like to close it out as a residential unit as well, and that's our request from the board. And I can answer any questions you can ask.
So before I open up to the rest, just one question is, I know we had a conversation about phasing with you, correct?
We got, yeah, we got through that.
Okay, which one would this be in?
Which?
Which phase?
We built it all at once, there really was no phasing on this project. So this is the last building on the, in the development.
Okay. All right, so we'll stop, Mr. Lozardi.
So, yeah, just on the building, is this the one in the front, or is this the one?
Very, as you pull in from Main Street, first building on the left, three-story.
Just the first building.
Looks different than the rest.
Okay. I think outside of that, that's my only question.
Mr. Fittaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I thought it had an issue with the fact that we never even tried to rent it, but the new bylaw has, has taken over, so I can see why you want to do that. The place looks great, I think having four affordable units there, which will be coming eventually, right?
Correct.
Right, so?
Yes.
So once the?
Ready to go online, we have one ready to go, but the, we had to engage the Chelmsford Housing Authority to do the lottery, and it's in the process, but they're not?
Chelmsford or Tewksbury?
Chelmsford.
Okay, so why didn't we go through Tewksbury Housing Authority, just curious?
I really, I have to get back to you on that, I don't have an answer for that, but we ended up going through Chelmsford Housing Authority.
Okay.
They're very well-versed in the process.
Yeah, because Tewksbury Housing Authority has done the Soldier On Lottery for us as well, you know, and for the Tewksbury Home Build Group, so I just was wondering why it didn't go through Tewksbury, but whatever, hopefully get somebody affordable in there would be great, so with that, I'm all set.
Looking forward to it.
Yep.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it's a, it's a good-looking building, I've done it many times.
Thank you.
And my understanding is through a conversation that, that the unit that will be available, the affordable unit, is going to be, or can be, the handicap?
That's correct, thank you for pointing that out.
accessible unit?
Thank you.
Which I think is just outstanding, to be quite honest, to have that opportunity, so.
As we finish, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up to the board, but we are, this, the fourth affordable unit will also be 100% handicap accessible and built to a handicap spec. As soon as I am, if I am allowed this waiver, or this modification, then we'll go in and we're gonna change the interior door openings to be 36-inch openings, we're gonna change some of the appliances, because you have to be able to get up underneath the cooktop, and you have to be able to get underneath the sinks in the bathrooms with a wheelchair, so we're gonna finish it out as 100% handicap accessible, according to current state and local building codes. All set?
All set, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Lozardi?
Already went.
Did you? You already went, right?
I did not.
All right, Chairman, I forgot which order I went in for this one.
It's okay. Happy to see this. Anything that helps out our affordable housing stock is obviously beneficial to the town, even happier to see that it's gonna be ADA accessible and all that. Just one thing that I, I know one of the things you have to do is you have to redo some of your electrical, because all your switches have to get lowered?
Correct.
For things like that, but, you know, you could also potentially look into things that can be controlled, wireless outlets, things like that?
Mm-hmm.
Because then just carry your phone around, and, you know, someone who has trouble getting around the place might find it very beneficial, if they can, don't have to keep getting up and down to turn things on and off if they forget something.
We've solicited two proposals, Mr. Chairman, for automation in that particular unit, we haven't received it yet. The rough electrical has not started yet, we're waiting to make that decision, see how much more that will add to the building cost to do something automated, where you could operate that unit from your phone or an iPad.
Sounds great, and you're, there won't be any issues with the parking in the front, there's enough access for loading and all of that?
Yeah, we've made that, those concessions were addressed by the planning board early on, we didn't change anything in the front of that building, we have our handicap accessible units, we have our wheelchair access to the walkways, that's already in place, it's already been built up.
Can't find any issue here, it looks like an absolute win, so, thank you.
All right, the Chair's all set as well, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one?
Just one more question, Mr. Chairman. How about expected date of occupancy, possibly?
I would say within minutes of the lottery, the other units, none of the units run the market for more than 24 hours before they were occupied?
Okay.
And with the housing crisis currently in Massachusetts, as soon as the Housing Authority can get these units through the lottery process, it's a long, involved process?
Yeah.
There's some legal paperwork that had to be done behind the scenes also by our people. All of that has been done now, so it's a question of picking the date, and then we'll have the lottery, and we'll have a, I'm sure?
I know the state, DCHD, whatever it's called, is in no rush these days to get some of this stuff done, because it's, and it's costing everybody opportunities for housing, you know, so, I mean, hopefully, I hope you have good luck getting it through the process, so.
I hope so, too, we're working diligently on it, Mr. Fittaya, and, you know, we're confident that within 60 days, the building will be finished, and I believe that the lottery will have closed by that time, and so as soon as we're ready to ask for occupancy permits, we're gonna have tenants.
Good, great, thank you.
So already opened it up, brought it back, any other questions, comments for anyone on the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public, close the hearing?
All right, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, as to the special permit request.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the special permit at 935 Main Street to develop that unit as a affordable unit in perpetuity.
All right, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to the board. Thank you, Alex. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item D, 1167, 1177, 1187 Main Street. Apparently, we did not open this before, so a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second? Motion made, second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Once everybody gets settled, I can give your names for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Don Bornstein, I'm attorney for the applicant, my office is at 12 Chestnut Street in Andover, it's Johnson &amp; Bornstein. With me tonight is the, is representative of the owner and applicant, Garrett Barabee. Also with us tonight is the project team, Jack Sullivan is the project architect, and the civil engineering firm Civil Design Consultants, we have Jim Hanley, and next to me, Mira Cousins, who'll be presenting the project for us.
All right.
The property is located at 1167, 1177, and 1187 Main Street, it's adjacent to the McClellan Oil Buildings. It's located within the, within the town's new town center district, I'm told this may be the first project that has gone through the new town center district zoning. We're proposing a residential development, it's proposed, and in your package, as a 30-unit residential development, you'll hear some more information on that tonight. We're asking for three forms of relief from the board, so site plan approval under 3.6.2.0A, a special permit for multifamily dwelling, that's in the use table, Appendix A dot 2 dot E, and major land disturbance approval under the general bylaw, Chapter 19, the stormwater For this project, we're asking for a single waiver, so there's one waiver, we believe we comply with the bylaws and all other ways, we have a single waiver for a six-inch reduction in the width of certain parking spaces within the garage spaces. Mira will explain that in a little more detail as she goes through the site plan. So with that, we're asking for three forms of relief from the board, we're in your new town center district, we're proposing what we believe is an excellent new residential structure in that district, and I want to leave it there, because I know the, the project team is very excited to present this development to you, they spent a lot of time working on this design with the owners, owners very excited to get this in front of the board, we've done a lot of prep work to get here, so with that, I'm just gonna pass it over to Mira.
It's a lot of excitement.
It is.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I know we're anxious to get going here, but you said you're only asking for one waiver on a reduction in the parking garage spaces, but in our packet was a request for waiver because you have, your number of dead-end spaces is over our limit, is that no longer the case?
So, was updated, Don, so it's now the dead-end spaces, the old one was for the old 30-unit configuration, so the new waiver request is for the dead-end spaces, so that is what you have right now. We're no longer?
So there are two waivers, one for the size of the spaces?
No, just one, so this new build, I'll go over it.
Okay, I just wanted to, because you laid everything out so perfectly, I didn't want there to be a but, or a, you know, but wait, there's more at the end of it, so.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman wants to say excited, too, so that's.
Good.
All right, thank you, Don. So we submitted our initial proposal to the town on September 14th, so the initial application proposed 30 units with three floors of 10 residential units above an at-grade parking garage. The parking garage provided 30 interior parking spaces and 50 exterior spaces for a total of 80 parking spaces. So due to the cost being significantly higher than it's anticipated, the applicant has decided to reduce the density from 30 units to 24 units. So we submitted the revised plans, that includes the reduction units, on Thursday of last week, and that's what you guys have in front of you right now. So I'm just gonna walk through the project here, so the project is located at 1167, 1177, and 1187 Main Street. The parcels are located within the town center zoning district, as well as the groundwater protection and floodplain overlay district. You may recall that an A&R was endorsed by this board in June of this year to divide the three former lots totaling 3.1 acres into two lots. So Lot 4 contains 1.1 acre of land with 120 feet of frontage along Main Street, and is currently used as the operational headquarters of McClellan Oil. This lot has two buildings, one used for office space, and the other is a maintenance garage. A portion of the existing single-family house at 1167 Main Street currently encroaches onto the property, so if you can see my cursor here, that's that 1167 house. Lot 5 contains two acres of land and has 336 feet of frontage along Main Street. This site contains the remaining portion of the 1167 Main Street single-family house, as well as two other dwellings formerly associated with 1177 and 1187 Main Street. The others' existing site features include parking areas, access driveways, landscaped areas, a swimming pool over here, and an existing tennis court down here. So what we're proposing. So there's two parts to this project, so the first part is to relocate a portion of the existing wood-framed house on 1167 Main Street onto Lot 4, Lot 4 of the McClellan Oil property, and convert it into an office building. If you can see my cursor, this is the location of the relocated house. Four parking spaces are required for the office use, and we have provided four spaces. The second part of the proposal is this multifamily building located on Lot 5, so this building is a four-story, 24-unit multifamily building. The first floor is proposed to be a 26-at-grade parking garage, the second and third floors will contain 10 residential units, and the fourth floor will contain four residential units. So there'll be 14 two-bedroom units and 10 one-bedroom units. At the exterior, we're proposing 36 parking spaces, so between the interior and exterior parking areas, we have a total of 62 parking spaces where 60 parking spaces are required, so we have two more than the required number of parking spaces. For access, we're providing 24-foot-wide driveway off of Main Street, we're proposing a four-foot-wide planting zone adjacent to the vertical granite curbing along Main Street, followed by a six-foot-wide cement-concrete sidewalk along the entire frontage. For stormwater, we're proposing multiple catch basins that are located in the parking lot, that'll capture runoff and discharge into a subsurface infiltration system located below the parking lot. Here's an architectural plan of the building, how it would look along Main Street. I do have a video that I want to share. I do have a video that I want to share. Don't know why it's freezing over there. Try that again.
I just don't like that part of the video.
Yeah, it's working fine on my side, but for some reason. Just moving on, we're requesting one waiver from Section 6.1.8. C to allow for more than five parking spaces on either side of a dead-end aisle. The proposed parking lot provides seven and six spaces on either side of a dead-end aisle. I'll just go back to plans here. So those spaces are located here. So we have seven here and six here, and this is a dead-end aisle here. We have multiple wetland resource areas on site, so we have filed a notice of intent with Conservation Commission, and currently, we're in the permitting process with them. We did receive a review letter from the planning department on October 23rd and the town's peer review consultant on October 26th. So the submission package that we dropped off on Thursday includes our response to both review letters. So with that, you have anything else to add?
Don, what we're hoping to get tonight, of course, from the board is feedback from the board, feedback from any butters or town residents that have come out to see the project. We wanted a good opportunity to show you the start of the design, the revised version that's been submitted just in advance of this meeting, and to get as much feedback as we can, anticipating another session with the board.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, it looks really nice. I've seen some very similar, and I don't mean to cast a dispersion on your architect, but I've seen very similar buildings of this style, same relative frontage and whatnot, and I think they've really brightened up the areas that they've gone in. So, it looks great. The, you know, I see in the notes that we're still waiting for a lighting plan.
Yes.
I'm sure you have a lot of your own site lighting. I'm assuming you're on good terms with your neighbor, since they also own the property. But I'm curious about what, if any, type of lighting and the access to the street will be. Things like that. You know, we want to, I guess, I guess how well that's done or how that's done can really shape how this interacts with Main Street, our pedestrian traffic, you know, proximity to the library and whatnot. I know I was on the Town Center Master Planning Committee a long time ago, and generally, we were hoping to, through projects like this, really create sort of a well-lit, well-traveled corridor between the Town Center and the library as two anchor points of a nice Town Center feel. So I think this creates a nice opportunity to do that. I don't see a current IDR letter, but in reading through all of your responses, it seems like you've been very thorough in answering to the engineering department and meeting their requests and concerns. So that being said, I have no issue myself with the waiver. The dead-end area looks like it's more than navigable. So, I can pass the mic off at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you explain, or just give me a better description? I know you said it's a three-story building, is it a three or a four?
Four stories.
Four-story building. And what does the top floor consist of? I mean, it looks substantially different in your rendering than the bottom three floors.
Yeah, so there's going to be four units, so that's what I'm showing on the screen right now. And then there's going to be a roof deck, so these areas that are, this is all going to be roof-deck area, and then just four units back here. So this will be on the top, fourth floor.
Okay, so I'm looking at the sightline exhibit, Exhibit 1, and it shows that, I mean, what I'm looking at is, it looks like a parking lot that's right on the street. Is that actually the building footprint?
Which one?
Oh, that's the underground? Is that what I'm looking at?
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at Exhibit 1, sightline exhibit.
So this is the, the first level is the parking-
So there's more, oh, the first, the first street level or an underground?
Yeah, street level, it's at grade.
Oh, at grade, okay, okay. All right, that clears it up a little bit for me. No, I think it's a great idea, and I agree with Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with the waivers or the lot locations when we, when and if we do get to that. Am I all set, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Mr. Fratella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a number of comments and concerns, the design and the, I know you went way out and got the best architects around, and the Gavin and Sullivan, I mean Sullivan and, yeah, Gavin Architects, so it does look great. So some of my concerns are, how close is the building to the oil tanks in the rear?
The 24-unit, the big building here, how close is it from?
Amir, is that, is that the pad in the bottom left? Is that the type pad?
Yeah, I want to say it's about 100 feet or so.
Oh, yeah, okay. So my other question is, how far off the street is the actual building?
19.8.
19.8, that's counting the sidewalk and then, so the street, sidewalk, which is probably about seven or eight feet, and then?
Yeah, so the front setback in the Town Center is measured from the curb to the front building line.
Okay. So my concern, and I want to echo my opinion to my colleagues, is we did a property on Main Street. And in my opinion, it's too close to the street. So, in this particular building, it's going to be the very same situation with it being so close to the street. I know we're in the Town Center District, but did you ever think of the idea of flip-flopping the building, putting the parking lot up front and the building in the back? At all?
There's a maximum 20-foot front setback in the Town Center, so we have to be less than that. So we were trying to comply with the setback regulations.
So you can't get that close to the street, correct? Is that what you're saying?
No, they can't put the parking lot in the front. They have to be within 20 feet of the street with the building.
With the building, oh, okay, I get you. Is that something, oh, we do?
Yeah.
Pardon me on that, so. I just, I just echoed some concern about the building being so close to the street with the noise and Main Street and the residents being there. You know, whether they're going to like that or not, and they're not going to have a choice, I guess, at this point, if we can't flip-flop them like I was, had the impression of, but, um, okay. So, that was my concern, because we have another property on Main Street that was really on the sidewalk, just about. I thought there was an issue down there, right across from the bank, Mr. Sullivan's property, if you remember it. And I thought there was an error in the construction, but it wasn't. It was, that's how it came about, so, but, uh, so. All right, with that being said, have you had discussions with the fire department about the tanks in the building and so forth and so on at all, or is that an issue or not?
We haven't received any comments from the fire department. I don't know. Did you receive, Alex? No.
Okay, because I would think it'd be a concern. I mean, there's no real, a number of properties right there now. Oh, they're bringing in the heavyweight, no, here he is. So I think, so my concern for the residents of town, and if they're going to live there, is, you know, are there any, are there any issues as far as the tanks? And have they upgraded their, you know, fire suppression and alarm systems and so forth for that particular building coming in?
So, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants, it's a good question. We have, we did perform an IDR with the town. The fire department was part of that IDR, we did submit the plans. We haven't gotten any specific comments relative to that, but that's something that we could, we could try to track down for the next-
I can call them as well. That was just one of my concerns. I mean, there hasn't been any problems in the past, I don't foresee any problems in the future, but just being proactive rather than reactive to a situation that may come about, you know, with now a 24-unit building up front versus, you know, an office in the past, you know, so. But, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, right now, and how many affordable units would there be? Four, okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Lazard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do like the design of the building, I think it looks very good there. I do also like it being in front of the parking lot. Like, I think that building looks a lot better than, you know, if you were just looking to look at a bunch of parked cars laid out in front. I have no issues with the waiver for the dead-end spaces, that looks fine to me. But just a couple of questions with regard to parking. Kind of looking at this, are the spaces inside different dimensions than the spaces outside?
Yes, so the zoning bylaw requires the 10 feet wide by 20 feet long.
Okay.
And we have provided that.
Okay, so it's different dimensions for the garage versus outside parking?
Yeah, exterior is 18 and 1/2 feet long by 9 and 1/2 feet wide.
Okay. And then just one other question, I know just because we were chatting about potential fire department concerns. With the garage on the first level, if we have like an EV fire that are kind of a little bit difficult to put out, are there any considerations made for that nowadays?
Mr. Chairman, board members, Jack Sullivan, Gavin Sullivan Architects, very good question. And I've asked fire prevention how they felt, because we would have six EV parking spaces per the new energy code. I don't want to put them in the building. I have no kind of response from the fire department, so I think on the latest plan, we have the EV spaces outside. But that's going to bring up a whole other issue of discrimination. Everybody's being told to buy EV cars, but you can't put these fires out. You know, sprinkler systems don't work because the battery is underneath, so. Well, I'm still waiting for a response, you know, from the fire department, so.
And so you said there'd be six of them, and the current proposal would be outside somewhere?
Yeah.
Not under there?
Yeah. And to another point while I'm here, I know that, Don, so that we need a waiver for the parking. On the inside, we don't, not now. For the 30-unit building, we did. Now we have, all of our interior parking spaces are 10 by 20. And we have two extra spaces, and we're able to get bike storage, the bike rack, inside off of the entrance off of Main Street, so it worked out perfect.
Okay. I think that's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
So, since we're talking about the garage, one of the things, like, just because I know from other people who have had places that have garages under them, what, what do you have that makes sure that the carbon monoxide from the cars running, warming up, car starters and whatnot? Is it coming up and getting everybody on what is your second floor?
I can answer that too. It's, this is a conditioned garage, heated and vented, especially with, as you just stated, these automatic car starters. Very low threshold before these fans and vents kick on, so.
All right, so my other, my other question on the parking, so we've got all these windows across the front which look into the parking garage, correct? That's the floor they're on?
Correct.
Do they actually look into the parking garage?
Yes, it brings light in.
So I'm not 100% sure if I'm thrilled with the idea of all the fronts of the cars being what's on street level staring at the front of cars?
Oh, no, no, it's enclosed. You won't see the cars. The first floor is a limestone veneer, it's solid. So it's, it's like if you had a garage at your house, you pull in. There's no visual exposure to the, to the garage.
Cannot see the cars through the windows?
You cannot see the cars, no.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking. So you cannot see the cars through those windows?
No, that first, if you look at the, behind you, that first level is a limestone veneer. We're picking up the limestone from the Town Center Buildings, but it's all enclosed. The entrance is in the back for the cars.
Okay, so, but if I look in that window, I'm not going to see the front or back of a car?
Oh, you're not, they're up high. That garage is 12 feet high. Those windows are up about 10 feet above Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah, you won't see any cars.
Okay. So, on the, on the roof deck, is the roof deck for the entire building or is it just for the presidential suites?
It's for the entire building.
Okay, so everybody has access?
I have one of the presidential suites that gets-
No, I was just asking, because I was trying to look at the floor plan-
No, it's common.
And it didn't look like there were walkouts from those units. There aren't, right?
From the two, two-bedroom units, they have direct access-
Okay.
-out to, and the main core, which is about 2,000 feet of roof deck, has a common entrance off of the elevator lobby up top. It's for the entire building.
Okay, so does that mean the two, the two corner ones, are those decks meant to be exclusive?
Not meant to be exclusive, but-
Well, you got something in the way there, are those like planters?
We have plantings, yeah.
So, kind of, sort of? Let's just say the people on the two ends are going to be excited, because there's something in the way, people getting to the bottom of the deck.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know what it is, there's something, I like this, I do, but it's something about the, the, I like the bottom and I like the top. It's the middle section that feels a little, like, it's so similar, like, so much of it, that there isn't anything breaking it up, I don't know.
Well, we break it up with colors, and it doesn't really show on the rendering. The colors are gray, a white, and then you have the window boxes on the Juliet balconies, and every unit has that.
So now, the window boxes, because I mean, in the, in the picture, obviously, look, are these actually accessible to the unit owners?
Oh, yeah, you just, you open the slider and it's right there, it's the Juliet balcony.
So for them to look good, it also requires the unit owners, unit owners to make sure they look good.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. The only other thing, I guess, I'd say, and I think this is off of Mr. Chairman's comment, and I don't know whether or not it'll look right or not, I have no idea, but I'm thinking along the lines of what we did with the hotel. I mean, we had some of them, had them put in some of those old-fashioned kind of light poles along the side that's on North Street. And I know I see those ones that are over in Bill Ricka, in that one section. And I just don't know if something like that is term, you know, because I don't know what you're going to do lighting-wise yet, but Mr. Champ was commenting on, you know, lighting, and I don't know if maybe something like that, you know, not a ton of them, you know, but I don't know if something like that coming down just inside the, you know, your, your rock wall or something, whether or not that would, would help too, because obviously, they're not going to be in anybody's way, because those windows don't belong to people, so you're not worried about blocking anybody's sightline. And I doubt they could possibly be tall enough to bother anybody on the second floor, which is the first living space. So I don't know if that might help a little bit, just, and just give it a, you know, a little extra something, I don't know. But I'm not the architect. So, I just, I know I always like those when I see them. I remember that we did them up, you know, along North Street there, you know, so I don't know. And this is, it's a bit long, so anything that sort of breaks up that, that feeling of it being long, I think will help people feel, you know, it gives it a little sectioning.
Yeah, cuts down the massing, and that's what we're trying to do with the materials and the colors, without being, you know, too drastic.
You know, it's not insistence or, it's just, you know, throw it out, see what you think. But otherwise, you know, it's certainly, it's certainly different for us, you know, I mean, I really like the roof deck thing, I don't know why, it's just sort of, I'm not really sure what exactly, you know, you're not exactly looking off into, you know, a mountain range or anything, but you mean, it's just something about that looks really nice.
I could offer an additional comment on that. One thing I like about this, that I hope will become a model for other similar projects in this district, is at, for pedestrian level, you're only going to see three stories.
Correct.
Right here, we see all four, but nobody's going to see the roof deck from the pedestrian level. So while it's a four-story building, not all four stories are 20 feet from Main Street, so that actually scales it down a little bit-
That's right.
-which I like.
And the bylaw states that the fourth story has to be stepped back, so that's why we did that, so.
All right, I'm all set for now, obviously, we've got this other stuff-
Make one more quick comment, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And it's about the-
And it's about the EV charging, and I don't know the answer to that as far as, you know, is it a CO2 system, is it whatever? What battery fires out? But, you know, maybe there's a, you know, it's a conversation you're going to have to have with, with, you know, fire departments.
Yeah.
And building department to put some type of a, for the six chargers, something maybe under roof in the parking lot.
Well, that's one of the thoughts, you know.
Yeah, something along those.
A lot of the municipalities that we're working in now have outlawed EV cars in an enclosed parking garage.
Yeah.
And insurance companies are doing that, too.
Yeah, no, I, I understand the problem there. You know, until there's a, you know, a sheriff way to extinguish the fire, there's a, it's all, it's all kind of an unknown at this point. So, but, but I would say it's still a good idea to have them.
Yeah.
And, you know, to have the charging stations and, you know, you don't want to exclude renters from having, you know, having access to EV chargers.
But it is a challenge right now.
Yeah, sure.
So just to, just to feed off Mr. Duffy, if it turns out that it's going to end up getting some sort of covering over the, you know, over the top, outside but covered, you know, I don't know where it'll be and how visible it will be, but the first thing I think of is, you know, something, because they just were in here, like Lowell Fives, the way they did their drive through this right on 133. It has a look of more than just a, you know, a drive up ATM. So the same idea, I think maybe if you're going to put something like that in the back or where it can be seen at all, to give it some sort of, you know, sort of design.
Like a Kennedy.
Not just, yeah, not just to have it covered, you know, for the sake of covering it. But something that lets it blend in almost as if it's, you know, it's more of, you know, not gazebo, but something, you know what I mean? That it almost hides what it is.
Yeah.
Since we don't typically cover anything in a parking lot. You know, it's kind of an in-between, making it look kind of like it's part of the building.
Yeah.
But yet, you know, it's not, you know, so it's just not a straight roof in the back that kind of takes away from everything else. All right, so with that, I'll open it up with the audience, seeing that there is no one in the audience to comment on this at this time. Bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making most, Mr. Chairman, to continue the hearing.
All right, so we have 7:30 on 11/27.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, 7:35.
7:35, I'm sorry. We have a motion to continue to 7:35?
Still moved.
All right, we have a motion made.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for sharing our excitement.
All right, moving on to agenda item E. This is 19, 913 East Street. The applicant has requested to continue to our next meeting on the 27th. We have them penciled in for 7:10. A motion to continue to 7:10 at our next meeting.
Still moved.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The same for agenda item F, which is 1879 Main Street. We have them, so that's 7:30. Okay, so we have a motion to continue them to 7:30?
Still moved.
A motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item G, 1438 Main Street. They are also requesting to be moved to the 27th. We have them in for 7:15. Do we have a motion to continue?
Still moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Agenda item H, which is 1600 Shawshin Street 1. Do we have a motion to continue that till 7:20 on the 27th? A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And agenda item I, 1600 Shawshin Street 2. We have a motion to continue that until 7:25. So we have a motion made to continue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That brings us to agenda item J, which is 836, 846 Main Street. Thank you. For us. All right, gentlemen, should give me names of the wreck and the floor is yours.
Sure. Stephen Dresser, Dressland Someway, I'm the civil engineer on the project.
Michael Columba, Ona.
Floor is yours, Trump.
I think, this is the first meeting I'm attending, but my understanding is most of the issues are resolved. We're kind of having some discussions with the engineering department. We were able to meet with them today. They did issue comments on November 9th. So we had a discussion based on all of those comments. The papers that were handed out to you were those comments as well as the responses to those. I think we're on the same page with the engineering department. We've agreed to certain, certain things in their request and the direction in which we should go on those. We can go through these one by one if you want. The intent of us being here is that Mr. Columba has been waiting for this for, for quite some time from when he started. And we're hoping that we can get a approval conditional upon meeting the comments from the engineering department. Based on the meeting today, we're very comfortable that we'll be able to satisfy their comments in whole.
All right, so if you want to run through where you stand on them?
Sure. Since it's gone back and forth, they had a green comments, purple comments, red comments. The most recent would be the red comments and the most recent engineering comment would be the one above those. I did not, the ones that have been resolved, I did not have a response to. The first one was regarding kind of, kind of the utilities as well as, I believe, some roadway locations. So we just kind of clarified that there's an existing, there was an existing office slash house at one time on the property. And the water was cut at the curb stop, not out to the main, and they would have liked that, which would have involved kind of a process because the street was recently paved, so would, would not be able to break into the road. So the resolution that we came up with that they would take that water service and use it as irrigation. So they're going to be extending that back onto the building. The roadway conditions are, in the middle of this process, that the state went out and finished Main Street. So they have new sidewalks out there, new curb openings. So we just got to put some of that detail on the plan for them. Doesn't really have anything to do with how we're using the site. It's offsite, but it would be appropriate to show it on the plan. The number two is kind of a stormwater management point, comments. We've agreed to, this is a redevelopment project. With redevelopment projects, you have to show, you can meet the stormwater guidelines to the maximum extent practicable. Beware it is an existing site, and we went out and did testing and found the groundwater. We don't quite have the offset that would be required in a, in a new design for, for this project. So under the redevelopment standards, we do meet that. What they would like to see is basically more detail and kind of explaining why we, you know, in writing, why we can't meet the full compliance of, of the standards. Number three is the sidewalks. We have added them to the plan, but we had some discussions where we're not, I'm not super comfortable designing that sidewalk because it goes out to Boston Road, which is, you know, paved very narrowly up to some overgrown. But we are willing to do it if that's what it, if that's what has to happen. What we agreed upon with them, they talked about money and lieu of the sidewalk. But until that design is done, they can't give us, they can't give Mr. Columba a dollar figure. So we've agreed to do the sidewalk design, have them give us, give us a price on that, and then Mr. Columba can decide whether or not he'd rather do the cash and lieu, and that can be condition and part of your conditional approval as well. Number four was good. Number seven, there's very good site distance out there. Not too worried about it. It's just a matter of being able to get out there. Very busy, small company, and just, you know, it's a little bit of a survey to get not only the sidewalk up front, but that. But we agree that we'll, we'll put those on the plans. They would prefer to see them on the plan. Number eight, that goes back to that service. We just need to collect, give them a little bit more clarity on the plan where the service was being connected, the one for the irrigation. Onto. Some new comments. The next one, I think, is RE and C1. The response is RE and C1, 111323. This again goes to the stormwater standards and just giving them a more comprehensive stormwater package when this first, when this project first started. We were under the understanding where we weren't increasing the impervious area, that drainage caps wouldn't, wouldn't be required. And as the project went on, it turned out that that was not the case with the engineering department. We've agreed to give them that report. They also were like, we went out and did test holes as per the stormwater management regulations. They apparently have an unwritten policy that they need to witness those, witness test pits there, so we're going to line that up with them. Number four was just about kind of a, more clarity on the detail for the trench. We had agreed to cover the whole entrance, the employee entrance with a drain trench. But we're going to make that more clear. And they had some new comments based on that November 9th, 23 letter. Handicap detail, we will revise that. We'll revise the plan. There was some text left off a clean out detail, which was really a drafting issue, but we'll revise the plans for that. We talked about aisle width, and we're going to revise the plans for that, just so you know, that will narrow the front green strip by a foot and the side green strip by about nine inches. We're still providing more than what's there now. Just detail on the granite curbing in the sidewalk. We agreed to that. That should say sheets, not seats. So it was probably a spell correct thing. The applicant has, just with all the revisions that we've made to it, some of the text is kind of overlaying on the other text. So we're just going to give maybe an existing plan and take that off of that or a utility plan, something along that line. That was a good suggestion by the engineering department. For some reason, a new comment came up about a sidewalk around the back entrance. This is really, they agreed in their comment that it was up to the building commissioner. I'm not aware of anything in zoning that makes you have a sidewalk to every entrance, so. But again, that would be up to the building commissioner. They had some concern about some access on some parking spots. We're going to eliminate one of the parallel parking spaces, and which would eliminate two seats and put us down to 15 seats. The parking table, if you make something to that. It's just a single sheet. Oh, it's on the back of this.
It's in the back.
So it's included just to put in the public record that there's a new parking table on that.
It's the last page.
Should have been in the package that you were given. So we're just losing a couple of spaces there. And number eight was the width of the entry in the back. We'll, we'll just narrow that down. It will, will not affect the fire truck turning. We'll provide a plan showing that. I'm sure the fire department, if we're, we're changing that, would like to see that, so. That's where we stand. It was a fairly productive meeting. I mean, we didn't see eye to eye on everything, but by the time it was over, we, we had come to an agreement on all the comments and what we needed to be done to, to reach their approval. And we're comfortable enough that we can get there, and Mr. Columba would like to ask for that, for approval with conditions.
Okay, start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when do you think all of these issues will be resolved completely?
Well, we, we need to set up soil testing is probably the big thing, you know, probably within, you know, we get the holidays coming up and all that, and again, I'm a small company.
Okay.
Less than a month.
Okay.
You know, but I think Mr. Columba, there's some things that he would like to get started on, whereas winter's coming and all that.
Like I mentioned to the applicant, I said, you know, we rely on the building, on the engineering department, the building department, on their, on their expertise to move this forward. And so our hands are tied to some degree until you have your issues resolved with them as well. And then we can get an okay from the, from the engineers to approve the plan, so.
It's not unusual to do a conditional approval. It's really the same thing.
Right.
To say that, yeah, hey, you're going to make the engineers happy.
It's one thing if you only have one or two things left, but you have a number of issues that are outstanding still. And, you know, I don't know if the board would be, be comfortable allowing everything to go conditionally until it gets.
What particularly is your, your problem?
Well, I don't, I don't want to interrupt Mr. Vitale, but just to clarify, you know, you've said it's not uncommon, but it's the board's standing intention, and we, we say it to everybody, is that we don't like doing conditional approvals. Because then the process isn't done, and you've got to throw it out, you know, back into the engineering department unfinished because we're not done with it. So generally, we do not grant them. There are exceptions that we make, and to Mr. Vitale's point, typically those are when there's, you know, an issue or two and it's a matter of crossing Ts and dotting Is. Or maybe, you know, when we're approving something in the summer when we only meet once every four weeks, because there's certainly a hardship involved in not coming back for a month. But it's not our standing practice to approve those, so that's Mr. Vitale's point.
Understood, but I mean, these issues, I mean, the real issue, the, the issues here are really this, this stormwater management thing and putting arrows on a plan.
I want to get into a debate about it. We'll leave it up to the board, but just so you understand the way we do it, that it's, it's the exception, not the rule here, that we don't, we don't do the conditionals. Because in the past, when we did them, we'd have problems, because we're out of the process after that. And then when there's people who can't come to an agreement, now they don't know what to do, we had to go, and we have a problem because they can't come back to us once we're done.
If, you know, if we didn't have a productive meeting today with the engineering department, I would understand that. So the burden is on us to, to meet the, I mean, that's a, kind of a high level for us of saying, hey, we're, we're taking it out of your hands and we're putting it in the engineering department's hands, too. We have to satisfy everything. We can't come to you and say, hey.
Which I understand, like I said.
You gotta, you gotta mediate this because this is the right.
But that's why I didn't want it to get into a back and forth about what we do, you know, that it's common or whatever. I'm just giving you how we do it.
Okay.
So it's up to the board if this is going to be one of those occasions where we make an exception. But that's not our standard rule, is what I'm saying.
Yes, every, everything is up to you guys. I understand that.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, thank you. So, so you will be submitting revised plans to satisfy the engineering department and the town, town staff as well, correct?
That would be the intent, yes.
Okay, so we need a lighting plan still that hasn't been submitted?
No, the lighting plan has been submitted.
Okay, and how about a sign plan?
I have it. I, I've been working with the sign guy and.
So we have a number of outstanding issues is what I'm saying. I feel for this gentleman and his, his concerns. He's come, he comes every week and so forth and so on, but he's been coming by himself without all the issues resolved.
And our difficulty when, when this whole thing came, I mean, you talk about normal processes. We were given the first review letter from the, from the town engineer. I called him to try, you know, a normal process would be that you sit down with them and you try and discuss the issues and why are you, what point are you trying to get to here? Like we did today. It goes back and forth. Today's went back and forth and all that. We made a resolution. When, when we got that letter, I called him and he respectfully declined to meet with me, so. I, I mean, you're, you know, so there, there is an exception here. I mean, for me, it's very unusual. I've been doing this for 34 years and never had a public official respectfully decline to meet with me. So that really put a kink in the process. I really feel like if he had met with me at the beginning, then we would have had what we hashed out, what we hashed out today and been done by now. But, you know, we were, we were kind of put behind the eight ball by a lack of ability to meet with the people making these calls.
And I understand that, and I understand this gentleman's concerns as well as not, you know, trying to get his process and his plans removed. I mean, move forward so we can get him to where. can get him to where he needs to be in you as well, so, but, yeah, I just, I just am hesitant to say, okay, yeah, we'll do this conditionally, but because of the number of outstanding issues still have, so. Do you think you'll be able to get them resolved in a two-week, two-week period?
I don't, they, they need to witness the test hole, I can't vouch for them coming out and witnessing a test hole. Is it possible? Yeah, it's possible.
Okay.
This is a very busy time.
You can do your due diligence, and then that's great, and then come next meeting, if most of this stuff is resolved, then I'd be willing to do an approval conditionally with a couple of things left overs myself, so. So I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zari.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I agree here that, again, there's a lot of unresolved things we want to see the plans updated for, and if you do come back in a couple of weeks, and these are all addressed, and you're still just waiting for test pits, and there's, you know, one or two things that we approve conditionally, I think that I would be supportive of, but with this many things, it's, you know, again, it's tough to, it's tough to sign off on this without seeing everything in here.
It looks big because the responses went back and forth, there really are not a lot of outstanding issues. What's been kind of agreed upon verbally needs to be put in writing, and, and that's basically it. I understand you don't have the expertise.
Yeah, even like on this page alone, like, there's six things on here that's...
Okay, we got those comments four days ago.
Mm-hmm.
So every time I've been responding with comments, I've been getting additional comments, so I could change these plans, and they could have comments the next time. It's, you know, I'd ask you to look at the fairness of that process from someone who wouldn't, who didn't have the time to meet with us, I guess, and then are adding comments on to it, so. And those six comments are basically, you know, little revisions on the plans, those are not significant at all.
And again, I think hopefully if we can get this all knocked out in the next couple of weeks, and then, you know, again, if there is something still open for maybe test pits or, you know, one or two other things, then I think we would look more favorably upon it, but it's just, there's a lot of, a lot of things that need to be changed here. And that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coming from the construction world, what I think, what my experience has been is, you're going to hand off a set of documents to your contractors on site, and they're going to build, and when they have a chance, they're going to look for gray areas where they can save money without refunding it back to you, as long as they meet the letter of what's on here. I think what the engineering department is doing is they're pushing you hard for a clear set of documents that demonstrates that this entire project will be built to all of the standards and DEP stormwater and everything else, so that there is no gray area for your contractors to take exceptions to, or try to cut a corner or anything like that. It covers the town, it covers the integrity of our stormwater system, covers the integrity of your site. So while this, while this may seem like minor drawing revisions and all that, I know how hard it is to try to construct something when you have incomplete plans. That can slow the process down even more, because you're waiting for answers, and then you're redesigning and issuing sketches and all of that. So while...
Site plan drawings are not construction drawings, they're, they're just not. Your, your site plan regulations are not, do not have standards that rise to the equivalent of construction drawings. So yes, they are trying to push me to the point where they have construction drawings to someone, but that's not really what the site plan criteria are. In particular, we're expanding a parking lot, but we're not, we're not building a building. We're putting in new parking, correcting some of the longstanding problems that have been out there, and we're improving the drainage system infinitely, because there's no drainage system now. I understand your point, I can see where this is going, but these are not, they're really not significant issues, and we'll overcome them. Obviously, we'll live by whatever decision you make, but, thank you.
So, well, that's pretty much my point, is I think the importance of the clarity of the documents and the things that the engineering department is requesting, I think they are crucial to this process and making sure that this project is successful in all ways that it needs to be.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Depp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I agree with my, with my colleagues here, there's way too many to even consider a conditional. You know, all of that being said, we would love to see you finish that project and get it open. I'm just going to say, from what I see, or from what I've seen over the, you know, the last couple of weeks and from what I read, nobody, I don't, I don't believe anybody on the board is going to undermine, you know, the job of the engineering department in town. Their job is to look out for what's best for the town, what's best for the town people, the residents. Now, you can spend your time, if you wish, arguing points with the engineering department, but I might suggest that you might just take care of the comments and move on, just a suggestion.
We've had that meeting, we had that meeting today, November 13th. The first letter was, what, August? I'm not sure when their first letter was, but we, we submitted in, I believe in August, so before your first meeting, they had the comments, so you say, sit down with them and, and come to, that's exactly what we tried to do two months ago.
Well, my understanding is, is that they asked for plan revisions and notations, they still haven't been forthcoming, and I don't know what the reason is.
They have been, but they've, they've added comments.
Okay, well, we don't know anything about what happened today, and we don't have any, we don't have any documentation, and we can't react that quickly, but that's your choice, I believe. You know, if you want to, if you want to argue with the engineering department to the end of time, that's your choice.
Okay, thanks. I'll take that, I'll take that under advisement.
We had a great meeting today. If we had the opportunity to have the meeting that we had today a month ago, I think we would have been a month ahead of this project. I guess that's the only complaint on our part, you know, and by the way, you know, despite the back and forth, you know, they were cordial, they understood the conversation, you know, the issues, the challenges, and like I said, we laughed, everybody understanding what's going on, and there was no hard feelings, it was, it was a good meeting. But I wish we had that meeting a month ago, or what is it, six weeks ago? That's one of my complaints about, you know, time goes by, and now I'm dealing with winter construction, which is obviously costly and, you know, a little bit more challenging.
We were also advised at the beginning, when we did our first submittal, that if we did not increase the amount of impervious area, that drainage calculations weren't, weren't required. So we lost that time, too. Our first submittal didn't include drainage calculations, because that's what we were told, because we didn't increase the amount of impervious area. We were given an example of a plan that here, do a plan like this, it was South Pizza. They also expanded their parking lot, but did not increase the impervious area, and did not do all these drainage improvements. So in our defense, we weren't necessarily, you know, we weren't submitted everything that the engineering department felt that they were required, and we were advised that we didn't need to do that.
Did you, did you pull up all the asphalt?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's still there.
Are we weak in requiring those calculations if you actually tear up the asphalt?
There's no standard that says if you tear up the asphalt, it's different than if you didn't. We had, we had prior survey that showed where all the asphalt is, it's still, everybody agrees it's a redevelopment plan, but for some reason, that's, we're told that's different. I don't know why that would be different, whether you, whether you pull it up after you get approval or pull it up beforehand, it really has no reflection of the stormwater management. Regardless, I'm just giving you an example of why we're here three months later, and we're not resolved, and the engineering department's kind of being thrown on me like I, like I did something wrong.
Mr. Depp, are you all set on the last?
I'm all set, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And think about, you know, we also removed the house, which was a big portion of the parking lot, you know, which was considered the impervious area, you know what I mean? So, once you remove the house, you have a hodgepodge of asphalt, it wouldn't be feasible, you know, to...
Well, I guess, I'm not, because we're not going to, I'm not going to go round, round about this, but there's two weeks between now and our next meeting. Even if we gave you a conditional approval tonight, you don't have the approval till you're done with all the things with engineering anyways, so there isn't anything you can do in the ensuing two weeks on a conditional approval, because you're not going to have the permit. They're not going to give you the permit until you comply with all the things you're asking for, so it isn't going to move your construction along any faster with the conditional, because if you don't meet the requirements, you're never going to get the permit. So us giving you a conditional in the next two weeks, which you may or not even get to your test pits anyways in the next two weeks, then you aren't going to be any further along in the process two weeks from now, because you still won't have the permit.
I can have the test pits done tomorrow, I mean, I just come, I'm just, I'm just, no, no.
I'm saying, if all this isn't done and signed off on by the engineering department in two weeks, in two ensuing weeks, us granting you a conditional isn't getting you anywhere.
Well, not true, because, for example, I could be running the water line, you know, from the previous, the house next door to inside the building. I could be putting the sidewalk in front of the building, the little patio on the side of the building, you see, I'm saying, there's things that we can be doing, you know? We could be doing even the drainage pits, you know, in the, in the back, if that's not going to change, we could be doing that, for example, you know, so when the approval is done, all we have remaining would be the, the asphalt, you know, we can do drainage for the...
Anything you need the permit for, you still don't have the permit, you won't have the permit. The conditional isn't sufficient to get you anywhere, because you won't even have it.
No, but what I'm saying is, the issues that are not argued or challenged, you know what I'm saying, can we start that kind of work while we're waiting for the issues that are to be determined? I mean, that's, I guess, what I'm asking, you know, just, time is, time is money, I mean, that's what I'm worried about, you know? I mean, come December 15th, I don't affect, I can't even get asphalt, you know, well, once you get the first frost, you know, asphalt may be difficult to get.
So any work that is a part of this site plan, it would be done at risk if the site plan approval hasn't completed its 20-day appeal period with the town clerk's office,
which is standard for all of our approvals? So if it's something that doesn't require a separate DPW permit, which water work certainly would, stuff around, around the outside of the building, you know, if that doesn't require any separate permits, then that could be done at risk under the conditional approval, provided that no other changes affect what you're proposing to in the meantime.
I mean, I could be running all the lighting conduits, for example, you know, the signposts, you know, all that stuff that minutia, if you want to call it that, you know, that can be done while we're waiting for the answers on the one or two big items, you know, that's, I guess, what I'm asking.
I would, I would try to move forward with that, you're only here to expand your parking lot.
Right. But I mean, I don't have anything else to add to it.
I mean, in my mind, he could, he could do the whole job, he just couldn't park there without, without this, because he's here to expand the parking lot, I mean, we don't want to be disingenuous and go build this whole thing and say, well, we won't park on it, because obviously people are going to park on it.
So, hold on a second, let me just do, bring it back. So we're going to open up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? There is no one in the audience, so we do not have any questions, comments, or concerns. Bring it back to the board, Mr. Vitale.
So, just a comment, I feel for you, sir, okay, in your, in your, you know, your process to get through this application. It's not easy, and I know, okay, it can be difficult. I reached out to the town plan, I was like, how is this project coming? And you said it's, she said it's moving forward, so I felt confident that you brought your engineer in tonight, whatever, I'm sorry, is that your name, engineer, right? Okay, and I'm happy, because you've come in here on numerous occasions by yourself, and I'm like, there's a lot of things that aren't completed, that we, our hands are tied, like I said in the past, so, you know, I feel for you, I hope it gets resolved in the next couple of weeks, and, and you can get yourself on your way going forward, so. I was going to see if I needed to step in and be an intermediary between the engineer department, yourself, and your engineer as well, if, if needed be, just to move things along on your behalf, so.
Look, I'm grateful that they met with us today, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I am as well.
It was discouraging, you know, here we went for answers, we're trying to, you know, have a communication, we couldn't, and it was discouraging, you know? And like I said, I appreciate that they met with us. We didn't agree on everything, but we had a good conversation, it was constructive, and I think, we left there feeling a lot more confident than, you know...
Hopefully in the next two weeks, you get all your stuff together and all your stuff in order, and we can, we can approve this for you at our next meeting. But at this point now, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we continue this till our next meeting and get it resolved better than we have it right now, so.
So the time would be 7:40. So we have a motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Okay.
All right, that moves us, let it go. Moving on to correspondence, we had a correspondence in here, correct?
One piece.
Yeah, I don't remember where it went, but, what is the, I lost it in here somewhere.
Correspondence was the public meeting for...
Oh, that's right, I did see that earlier.
25 Main Street Cannabis.
All right, there we go.
1625 Andover Street, right, Cannabis, sorry.
All right, so that's what, two, two notices that are pending?
Correct.
Yeah, all right.
Was it Main Street and?
2504 Main Street, the former south site, did reapply with the select board's office, and then this pending application, so there are currently two. I'm not sure if the formal filing has been made with the select board office for 1625 Andover Street, but those are the two pending applications.
That's why I asked them this evening about that, because they said it was a new business, and we had information about that, and he verified that when he was here, so.
All right, that gives it, brings us to other business not known at the time of the posting of the agenda, is there any such discussion? All right, hearing none. Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
A motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, see everybody at our next meeting.
Thank you.